Good evening. Thank you for attending the council meeting tonight. We are going to call the meeting to order. Maria, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Walter?
Here.
Council Vice Mayor Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Galen?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We are going to begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you could keep everybody in your minds and your hearts with everything going on in the world, it would be appreciated. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item five is called to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. We do have three calls to the publics. First, we have Mr. Robert Hope. Would you please come to the podium?
Hello. My name is Robert Hope. I live at 3826 North South Dakota Avenue here in Florence. And I'd like to address the council about the budget that's upcoming. And I believe that we have a deficit, that we're looking at a deficit. And I don't believe that we should be spending money on legal fees fighting Florence Copper, the Florence Copper Project. If I'm not mistaken, there's $300,000 allocated to that cause. And I think that money could be better spent. We've already spent $1,500,000 fighting Florence Copper and have lost all the legal battles. I think it's a lost cause fighting it anymore. I think we ought to just go with it. I don't believe that Florence Copper is gonna damage our water system in any way. And so I'm actually for Florence Copper. So I'd urge the council to rethink the budget and hopefully not spend this $300,000 on legal fees, but rather spend it on the town itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory Kuntz? May I apologize if I pronounced it incorrectly?
That's okay. My name is Gregory Kuntz. I live at 4047 East Thistle Landing, Phoenix, Arizona. I also own, my family owns 400 acres in Pinal County. And I would like to address the high property taxes. In many ways, this is a great community, but the actions of the council have led me to question my investment that I made 30 years ago and plans on retiring on that land in Pinal County with many members of my family. Many property tax owners in Pinal County do not realize we pay the highest property tax rates in the state. Our property tax rate is higher than Maricopa County, Pima County, and Hila County. Our property tax rate is higher than any other counties in this state. And why is this? One of the reasons is that Florence lacks a large and diverse number of businesses that would add to our tax base and reduce the amount of taxpayers homeowners and property taxpayers play. As a property owner, I'm frustrated that the town of Florence has a great economic opportunity to bring a business like Florence Copper Project to town, but refuses so. The business the size of Florence Copper would bring much-needed revenue and jobs to this town. However, not only are you not working on bringing this business to our constituents, you're actually spending limited dollars to fight the economic growth. Many residents in Florence are retired and living on fixed incomes. They need your help to make the community flourish and to help reduce tax burden on homeowners and property tax owners. I implore you to invest our money wisely and work towards economic development that will benefit all of us for now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Charles Watson?
Madam Mayor, council, thank you for letting me talk. I just had a few questions. You know, he said quite a bit what I was gonna say, like, oh, the budget, where's the money come from? And the only people gonna win out of this thing is the lawyers. They're gonna walk away with money. But my biggest thing is you're talking about fighting this. Can I ask you, have you just went over the bridge out north of town here and take a look at that mining that's going just by the side? And it's got water in it? If you're too worried about the water, take a look what goes in the river there. And then right in your, that's in the city limits, and you got some down by Ataway Road on this side, in the city limit. So I don't know why we're fighting. I think you ought to really consider this. Your mines, and if you do your homework, you'll find out mines contribute to your community. They'll support a lot of your programs. They'll support everything, Boy Scouts, your schools, and all the things you've got going on. They're supportive of that. You'll find out in other communities around here that have mines. Not only that, but actually, the jobs are important. And I don't know about you, but right now, jobs are pretty important around here. And that's about all I got to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Dr. Christina Dumas?
Hello. I'm Dr. Christina Dumas, 24528 North Goodpasture Lane, Florence, Mayor Walter, and the town of Florence Town Council. While the town of Florence does have some difficult financial decisions before it, I'd like to encourage you to keep funds in your upcoming budget to fight against Florence Copper Project. I understand the town is presently involved in a lawsuit with Florence Copper concerning zoning of this land. I encourage you to stand your ground in this lawsuit for several reasons. First, Curus purchased this 1,182 acres in February 2010, knowing full well that the property was zoned for master plan community, and it was located in the geographical center of the town's city limits, being annexed in 2003. Moreover, Curus was aware that the neighbor to the north, Anthem, had been established for Pulte Homes beginning in 2005. According to the town's 2008 general plan update, page 2-16, typical uses for the heavy industrial designation include mines such as Florence Copper Project. Further in this report, it says the only HI land use currently identified was the land use on the land use map is the Ironwood Landfield. That was the only place they could have done this. Thus, Curus purchased this land with eyes wide open. They have since tried to control the town into conceding and changing the zoning laws. Due to limited time to the call of the public, I am submitting a document for you that contains a lot of information, has to the misinformation and bullying from this company. Second, to the best of your ability, the town of Florence has the obligation to protect the public health of the residents. The operation of the mine may not only contaminate Florence's drinking water, aquifer, but it may also subject residents to the possibility of sulfuric acid spills, which can result in serious health effects. I'm submitting an article. It's called "Overview of Health Information Collected from Sonora River Residents," May 13, 2016. This article describes the health effects of a sulfuric acid spill occurred in the Rio Sonora Valley in 2014. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Robert Chappell?
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Robert Chappell. My address is 6665 West Stony Quail Way in Florence. What I'd like to say is Florence Copper Project personnel have swallowed up many of the people in this room with the spin that it's gonna create a lot of jobs, it's gonna create revenue, and they don't ever really talk about definitive forms of safety. As we all know, the only two certain things in life are death and taxes. So if there were to be a mine accident where there'd be a sulfuric acid spill, do we have in place a hazmat team that would be available to clean up the mess? I just heard this evening that there was a train derailment with sulfuric acid several years ago along the railroad track right close to Florence Copper. I don't know the details, but it's worth looking into. So I'd like to say, what if we had a spill? A highway is certainly not the type of road that could accommodate any truck traffic that might be coming in with tanks of sulfuric acid and other trucks to maybe haul out the copper that is supposedly gonna be coming to the surface in liquid form. So that's one consideration. But I would like to say, what if there is human error? Where I lived in Pennsylvania, we had a town called Centralia, which was in the coal mining region, and they had a deep mine fire. Miners were killed. The fire was unable to be put out. It burned for years and years and years. The town became a ghost town. In fact, there is no one, I don't think, living in Centralia again to this day. I also was not too far away from Three Mile Island, and we all know what that did. So human error can occur regardless of how much Florence Copper says the situation in mining copper within situ is safe. Human error can occur.
Thank you. Barbara Manning?
Good evening, Mayor Walter and council members. My name is Barbara Manning. I live at 3939 North Monument Drive in Florence. Since government's main responsibility is to protect their constituents, it's very appropriate that you spend our tax money protecting our drinking water. One can tell it's very appropriate by just remembering that one statistic that we've heard over and over again. There has never been an situ mine that has not adversely affected the water. Pardon me. I get that backwards. There has never been an situ mine that has been able to set the standard back of the water after the mining process is over. Not in the United States, not in the world. And unfortunately, Florence is already one of those statistics. We've already had groundwater affected adversely in the 1990s by BHP pilot program. It only lasted 90 days. Seven years after they were done, they still had not restored that groundwater back to its pre-mining conditions. And so we're gonna do it again. And that's something that you can think about as you plan the budget. There are some people that want you to give up on the legal issue regarding zoning. What a terrible precedent would be set if we allowed any company to come into our town and demand that we change our zoning. We would have no integrity in zoning. People would not purchase land, they'll not build homes, they are not going to go into business if they cannot trust their council to protect the zoning that was there when they bought the property. Consequently, I advocate that you continue to budget for legal fees, not only on the mine issue, but for any other issues that come up. And I look forward to seeing the budget in July. I guess it's latter part of July, and good luck with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our call to the public for this evening. Item six is presentations. Item A is a presentation on making progress towards a skilled workforce in 2030 by Donna Davis. She is the senior community mobilizer from Expect More, Arizona, and we have a proclamation in support of the statewide attainment goal and a world-class education for all of our students. So Ms. Donna Davis, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Walter. Members of the council, I am thrilled to be here. And I would like to introduce my partner in crime, Evelyn Kasuga. Evelyn wears many hats, but tonight she's here representing the Center for the Future of Arizona, who is a partner with us in this initiative. So Expect More Arizona is a statewide education advocacy organization. We believe that all of our students across the state are entitled to a world-class education or an excellent education every step of the way. Last summer, we developed in cooperation with the Center for the Future of Arizona this progress meter to monitor eight metrics having to do with education in our state. You can see that the top number on this progress meter is that 42% of our adults between the ages of 25 and 64 have a two-year degree, a four-year degree, or an industry certificate. In addition to that, we're tracking other statistics like college grad, or high school graduation, the number of students that go on to post-secondary opportunities after high school, opportunity youth, who are youth between the ages of 16 and 24 who are not working and not in school, teacher pay, third grade reading, eighth grade math, and the number of students, the percentage of our students, that are enrolled in a preschool experience. The number I really want you to pay attention to, however, is that 42% number at the top of the progress meter. That means that 42% of our residents, our adults, have completed a two-year degree, four-year degree, or received a non-degree credential, like I said. At the same time, 68% of our jobs in this state are going to require those educational attainment levels. So we have a problem. In September last year, the governor was joined by 40 other organizations and announced a goal for that number of 60% of our adults having some kind of a professional certificate or a degree by the year 2030. They are calling this initiative Achieve 60. And tonight, I'm here requesting your support by way of a proclamation for this initiative. If we increase that 42% number by 10%, we would double our current economic growth rate. If we increased it by 12%, we would triple our economic growth rate in this state. So that number is extremely important for all of us to make a concerted effort to encourage our adults to go on and get either a two-year degree, four-year degree, or some kind of a certification. For Expect More Arizona, we have a partnership program that we're encouraging you to be part of as well. And that is in support that you agree with a vision for education in our state that includes the advancement of those eight metrics. Partners, cities and towns and organizations and schools that partner with us, and Florence Unified School District is a partner with us, they get priority access to our staff, to our collateral materials, to our resources, they get acknowledgement on our website, they get an opportunity to influence our advocacy efforts, and they get this logo indicating that they're a world-class education partner to put on their website, or we have a window cling version of the logo to put on the front door of a building. Our partners, then, we work with them to come up with excellence tours, highlighting excellent things that are happening in their towns related to education. We provide them information about education that they can use in newsletters. We recognize teachers in those cities and towns that are partners with us. And so here tonight, I'm asking you to become a world-class education partner, to adopt the 60% attainment goal through the proclamation, and to utilize the education progress meter to set goals for Florence. And I appreciate the time you've taken to listen to me tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, you are in good company, by the way. There are other cities and towns that have issued proclamations and joined with us in partnership to include Casa Grande, Kingman, I'm trying to think. Evelyn will help me out here.
City of Eloy, Pinal County, Coconino County, City of Flagstaff, and we just want you to be part of that as well, so, Madam Mayor, council members.
We have something for you. Yay! Okay, so this proclamation, I'm going to read it for you. It says, "The proclamation, statewide attainment goal and a world-class education for all students, whereas the town of Florence, Arizona recognizes that we have to make education a top priority in our community to ensure a strong economic future and a higher quality of life for everyone. And, whereas the town of Florence understands that our future economy and workforce demands will require more than a high school diploma, and only 42% of Arizona adults currently possess a degree, certificate, or industry credential. And, whereas the town of Florence recognizes the need to improve educational attainment across the state and in our local community and supports the statewide attainment goal of 60% by 2030. And, where Expect More Arizona and the Center for the Future of Arizona statewide, nonpartisan organizations have launched an Arizona Education Progress Meter by which we can measure our progress on attainment and other key education indicators. And, whereas the town of Florence believes in the importance of the community coming together and the significance of partnerships to achieve big goals and tackle large issues like those defined by the Arizona Education Progress Meter. Now therefore, be it resolved by mayor and town council of the town of Florence, Arizona, and that the town Florence council hereby, the Florence Town Council hereby affirms that we are committed to achieving the statewide attainment goal of 60% by 2030. Furthermore, the town council hereby affirms the use of the Arizona Education Progress Meter as the tool to mark progress towards the attainment goal by tracking the priority indicators for our local community. Furthermore, the town of Florence hereby affirms that we are a world-class education partner with Expect More Arizona and will herefore work together to advance the shared vision for education." Yay! Mayor Walter, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Smile for a second. Thank you. Thank you so much. Item B is our presentation by the Florence Teen Council and highlights of their activities. I would like to call up Mr. Coco Hunter.
Mayor Walters, Vice Mayor Woolridge, council members, good evening. Hope all is going well. So the Florence Teen Council is approaching its one-year anniversary, which is phenomenal. It's been a great ride. So I put together a very brief video presentation that shows some of the activities and events that we've done over the past seven or eight months. Now, before I get into that, over the past 12 years, there's been some individuals, there's been some corporations that have stretched out their arms and embraced the Florence Teen Council, have been strong supporters, so I must recognize and acknowledge them. So here's our supporting cast. Kathy Adams, she have reached out multiple times to help us out and show her support. And I'll tell you what, the things that she has helped us out with has made us, has given us more opportunity to build a bigger carrot for these kids, and they greatly appreciate it. My man, I didn't know he was gonna be here today, Peter. As you see, he's right there. He's, this was during the holiday holdout for the 55 and Alive out here, and he came through and he saved me. And he has the kids right there helping him to prepare the meals, and they were all in. Thank you very much, Peter. Southwest Gas, they came through, I had no expectations of receiving anything when I came to that meeting, and lo and behold, found that they reached in with the help of Vice Mayor Woolridge. They made a donation, an investment, I'm sorry, into the Florence Teen Council, and we thanked them for that. Florence High School, they gave their facilities. Room 5 is where we meet every Monday and Wednesday. We also have done some things inside of their basketball court. And so I appreciate you guys for helping us out there. Florence K-8, we had a wonderful event where the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, they came out, and our high school students were able to present what the Florence Teen Council was about, and also getting them to stay in school and understand the importance of education. You know, at that age, they just wanna play kickball and eat tater tots during lunchtime, and they don't really understand. We've all been there. And so hearing it from me is one thing, but hearing it from high school students, it has a little more traction. So thank you, Florence K-8. And the town of Florence IT Department, these gentlemen helped to put together a video. So they put our Teen Council members in front of a camera, and, you know, they're pretty good in front of their little cell phones, but when you have that big camera with the microphone, the game changes. And thanks for giving them those skill sets. I really, really appreciate it. Now, as far as the events, activities, and some of our field trips that we've gone on, the Phoenix Suns game was a huge hit. And the members of the Florence Teen Council, there was only two groups that were able to go out there on the court and take pictures, and we were one of them. There were probably 18,000 people there that day, and we were one of them that were able to go down there. They loved that. And you know, they loved taking pictures with the dance team, the cheerleaders. And you see the guys, their face has a little more glow on it with the girls there. We all understand that. The special needs Halloween party, we had 315 special needs students that came to this event. And I'll tell you what, the Florence Teen Council, they put together, they had the food together, the music, they helped to do the decorations, they had this hero tunnel for when they were coming in, and you just see the faces on those students there. And these are teenagers coming in, special needs teenagers. And I don't know who got more out of that event that day, our members or those who were, that were from Tempe, but I tell you what, we were all winners that day. We also had a dance workshop at the Florence High School, and there was about 50 people that took place in this. They learned dance moves from Oscar Hernandez. Brent was not available that day to come and teach us some clogging, so we had to reach across the aisle. And Oscar Hernandez, he's the guy that was on the Ellen DeGeneres Show, everyone who is anyone, he has done choreography for, and the teams were in awe that someone like this would come to Florence. They're like, why would he come to Florence? Which was kinda sad for me to hear that. I'm like, well, why not? Are you not deserving as anyone else? And not only did he teach them a dance routine, he sat down after he was done and talked to them. And they were asking life-changing questions like, does Justin Bieber put grease in his hair? Does he put mousse? But those are valid questions to them, but he sat down there and he told them how to value themselves. He's a very, very, very big guy. He's Samoan, and he was looked down upon. He was not supposed to be one of the top dancers in the world. to be one of the top dancers in the world, but he is, and he is that way because of who he is. And so that was a very good life lesson for them to learn. The Teen Leadership Symposium, we had our first one, and teens from all over Pinell County came down to take part in this, and they're directors, and it was a phenomenal time. You see that they're having a great time. And a lot of the teens from Coolidge, from Apache Junction, they were like, well, why don't we have this in our town, in our city? And they were asking, how can they be involved a little bit more with what we have going on here in Florence? And that's phenomenal. The Summer Kickoff, we just had the end of summer, I mean, the beginning of Summer Kickoff last week, and it was a great, great, great time. And the teens are preparing to reevaluate what they have done the past 12 months and see how we can improve and swing a bigger stick next time. So, for all of those that came to support, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. And we're looking forward to doing some bigger and better things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 7 is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Piper Jaffrey to provide financial advisement services for infrastructure improvements. Item B is authorization to enter into an employment agreement with Clifford L. Matisse for the position of town attorney. Item C is authorization to enter into a contract for auditing services with Henry &amp; Horn LLP for an additional year in an amount not to exceed $33,500. D, authorization to enter into a lease agreement between the town of Florence and Sharon Greer for Suite 202 at the Silver King Marketplace. E, authorization to purchase a Caser Omega 83P blower from James Cook &amp; Hobson, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $38,000. F, authorization to contract with Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transport Incorporated, through a Pinell County Cooperative Contract, to perform hot-mix asphalt repairs to various roads in an amount not to exceed $65,350.05. G, approval of the acceptance of the public improvements for Independence Way STA, 10 plus 00 through 37 plus 73 and 51 hundredths. Approval of the acceptance of the public improvements for Spirit Way, Phase 4.1. Approval of accepting the register of demands ending April 30th, 2017, in the amount of Does any member of public or council have any questions regarding the consent agenda other than item F that Christopher has posted up here at this time? Okay, so we are going to pull item F just because Christopher is going to give us some background that he wanted to share, which is great news. Other than that, I just need a motion so we can proceed with everything except item F.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item F. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Mr. Salas, item F.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Unfortunately, two members of staff were sick when this item was being placed on the agenda, and we just were not able to create the map, and that was one of the questions. And the improvements are from First Street to Ruggles. This is in preparation for next year's PMAR projects, one of the PMAR projects being Phoenix Street. That was actually to be done this fiscal year, and because of the water line improvements taking a little bit longer, we've moved it to next fiscal year, which is only a matter of months away at this point. The cost will be shared between the water department's funds for the actual center section where it will be milled, and a new edge will be placed, so it'll be a clean fit before the PMAR project is done. And then the edges along Phoenix Street are in very poor condition, and so the HER funds will be used to repair the edges on there. And that's why the quote is for two separate items because of the funding. We wanna allocate those correctly between the two different funds, one being an enterprise fund, one being the HER fund. With that, I have nothing additional to add. It's, again, a JOC that we've used, I think this is either the fifth or fourth time that we've used from Cactus Asphalt through Pinell County.
Thank you very much. And that was more so for public information as well because it wasn't able to make it into the agenda packet. Is there any member of council that has any additional? Okay, with that, we need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to authorize Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transport Incorporated, through a Pinell County Cooperative Contract, to perform hot-mix asphalt repairs, various roads, in an amount not to exceed $65,350.05.
Second.
Okay, motion in multiple seconds, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same side, motion carries. Thank you. Yes.
Completely inappropriate, and I understand, but as with that quote, it was $78,000 to do mastic repairs, which we've decided to handle in-house through a contract with Craftco for only about $13,000 plus of manpower, so a savings of about $60,000. Understanding we have to pay our own employees, but I'm very proud of Dan Cisco and all of our guys for taking that on and taking that project in this heat. So, just wanted to say kudos to those guys for, again, putting up with all of my demands. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. That's what we were looking for. Thank you very much. All right, item 8 is our manager's report, Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have a few items for this evening. The first, I would like to read into the record a email that I received regarding an event that was held recently that I think is inspirational in terms of the town and our coordination. This past weekend, I had a unique opportunity to install car seats for people that live in the community of Florence. These car seats were donated by Banner Ironwood Hospital, and this event would have not been a success without their assistance. Banner Ironwood not only donated the seats, but also sent support for the administrative needs of the event. Officer Ballard and I had the unique opportunity to work together in a non-emergency situation and show the community that we were not only there for them in emergencies, but also to help out on a daily basis, and active, and are active members of their community. Allison Felice from Parks and Rec also assisted with our administrative duties, and it was greatly appreciated. I believe this event has opened a new door for Florence Police, Florence Fire, and other departments to work together to support the community that we all serve. These opportunities will give back in a positive way and are few and far between today and should be taken advantage of. Between Officer Ballard and myself, 15 car seats were installed and five car seats were collected to be disposed of. I installed an additional two seats this morning to residents that did not have children with them at the event. That's from Captain Bill Bruin. So, thank you to all those departments for their coordination and putting together that event. Secondarily, I received an email last week, says, "Congratulations, your post-inbut trail project has been approved to receive $10,624 in the recreational trails funding. All projects approved for recreational trails funding must be reviewed by the Arizona Department of Transportation's Environmental Group. They will review the NEPA and Section 106 documents for your project, and once approved, we can release these project funds from the Federal Highway Administration. This project takes several months, but we just wanna remind you that any costs or matches that are incurred to the release of the funds are not eligible. We are requesting that you send someone from your staff to participate in a webinar," and yada, yada, yada. But congratulations to the Parks and Recreation Department for receiving that grant, and of course, thank you to Jennifer for all of her hard work with respect to our grant applications, but another team effort well done. Thirdly, very proud to say that the 2009 WIFILONE is now closed out with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. That had been a long time coming, and it was complicated. It took, it took a year to get all that, the paperwork done, and to close that out and to complete the projects that had been ongoing since 2009. But it's officially closed out now so that we can go back to WIFILONE and look for some additional funds. And thank you to council for approving Piper Jaffrey's contract tonight. That's exactly what they're going to do, is work for us to go after Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, USDA Rural Development Funds, and Infrastructure Bank Funds to try and fund some of our needed infrastructure projects specifically on the water and sewer programs going forward. A few other items that I was asked to provide. Florence Parks and Recreation was honored again with 2017 Playful City USA designation, and that's our third consecutive year. I'm sure that you're wondering, because I got asked before this meeting from council members, but we're averaging about 250 attendees a day at the pool, and I was told that we had 378, 388, Sunday or Saturday? Sunday of this week. So, we're breaking attendance records at the Aquatic Center. The annual summer kickoff for teens, as you just saw, was held on June 1st, and that was a highly attended event. I happened to be going over there for swim team practice when they were leaving, and I had to dodge everyone because they were having a gigantic water balloon fight on the outside of the pool, all the teens were. But I was able to get by that. The summer kids program started today at the Library and Community Center, and we have record numbers there as well. I was counting heads today, and I counted over 50 kids in that program, which is about twice as many as were in the program last year. So, Brian, keep up the good work. May 31st, 2:00 PM, already gone. Sorry. I guess we had a fidget spinner class that was sold out, so they're gonna hold another one. And I'm seeing nodding heads, so some of you must have had kids that were involved in the fidget spinner class. The library summer reading program began today, and it runs through the 14th of July. It will, our library will feature daily programming. That includes storytimes, crafts, family movies, as well as games. For the first time ever, we're also gonna offer what's called the Code Club for kids from kindergarten through 12th grade, and it's gonna help kids with computer and computer programming skills. So, thank you very much, Jasper, for all your hard work putting that together. And a very important event that's coming forth, July 1st, we're gonna have a screening of the USS Indianapolis at the library, which as I understand it is a documentary based on those tragic events. And of course, everyone's familiar with our local hero who was on the Indianapolis and has actually come before this council, speaking to his, his story. If you want to attend that event, Jasper told me to tell you, please come forward and register in advance because we think that that is gonna be a very popular event. That's all I have this evening.
Very much. Department reports. Does any member of council or public have any question regarding the department reports? All right, thank you very much. Call to the public. We have one final call to the public, and that is Ms. Mary Escobar.
Hello, my name's Mary Escobar. I live at 550 East Echo Lane here in Florence. And I don't know if taxes were on the agenda, but I've been living here for six years, and our taxes have been raised several times at this rate because of decisions that everybody's making for the attorneys, whatnot. We can't afford to live here. We'll have to move. I like to feel that my family contributes to the town of Florence, but at this rate, we can't make, keep making contributions. So, I'm kinda wondering where all the taxes stand at if I'm paying for these attorneys and whatnot on every single thing that there is, that I possibly agree with or don't agree with. I'd like to live here, historical Florence, but it's not historical anymore. That's being taken away. Taxes are being raised so high that we can't afford to live here when we retire, which is why we came here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Billingsley, will you please touch base with Ms. Escobar because I believe some of what you're seeing in your bill is more reflective of the property values and what's happening with the county assessor and how your properties assess, and not so much of town council raising your taxes. Okay? Thank you. I'll make sure that he has your information. Mr. Anderson, did you have something that you also?
Several people have mentioned the taxes going up, and I would just like to reiterate, the town has not raised taxes in how many years?
Several.
It's been like six, seven years, eight years? So, the increases that you're seeing in your taxes is not the town. Your valuations may be going up, of course, that will raise your tax if your valuations go up. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of other things in your tax bill, and the town happens to be sort of a small part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to say thank you for Mark's celebration earlier, that was great. He did not, I don't see him here in the room. He's not here? No, he's gone. Okay. Well, it was Mark's last day today, so I just wanted to say congratulations to him on his future ventures. Also, I did attend the spinner making, and that was crazy, and it was fantastic, and the kids loved it, and it was great. So, I'd like to thank Brian for that program and putting it, executing it officially. Oh, sorry, Jasper. Is that Jasper? I thought it was a Parks and Recreation. Well, it was a great event, and it went off perfectly, even though they didn't expect the turnout, they had the great turnout, and everybody was systemically put in really nicely, so it was really good. And also wanted to congratulate Brian on the Playful City USA. Wanted to reiterate that again, that's fantastic, that's great. Thank you for, everyone for coming out today, and...
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
I was out of town all last week, so I don't have anything to add other than to ditto what Kristen said. I did see a lot of fidget spinners in Pennsylvania while I was there. So, I know that it's a craze sweeping the country.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I'd like to reiterate what Kristen said about Parks and Recs. We have a great program going on there. Appreciate all the work that's being done. Also, just to say, I attended the hearing for the Smith Building this last week. It was quite, quite a hearing, to say the least. It went on for about eight hours, and we didn't get through, so we're, we're gonna go back again. I wanna compliment the town staff, they performed very well, they stayed on point, and I think they made their points. They, they tried to, well, it's hard, hard to really get into it because they did their very best to answer all the questions that were, that were presented to them. They acted very professionally, I think they answered accurately and honestly. We'll be looking forward to the next hearing in, what is it, June 21st? June 21st.
Thank you. Councilmember Galen?
Yes, I just want to let everyone know tomorrow, beginning at 4 o'clock, we are having a budget work session. For any of you that are interested in seeing how the budget rolls out, we've been working very diligently as a committee to make sure that our budget stays in line with our revenues, the monies that's generated. So, if anyone's interested, they're more than welcome to come.
Thank you very much.
One other question on the budget, is the budget balanced?
The budget's balanced.
But we're not definite.
There's no deficit in the budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Hawkins?
I was gonna point that out also, that, I don't know, the gentleman said that we had a deficit, but we don't. And another thing, you know, and this is no reflection on the mining towns in Arizona, but some of these mining towns have been here for... in Arizona, but some of these mining towns have been here for, well, well over a hundred years, and I've yet to see any of them prospering and growing. They've kind of stagnated. I mean, I don't see any of them growing, and, uh, it's no reflection on them. I mean, they, they, the mines were there, that's why the towns were established, they were established around the mine. The mines didn't come in to the town after the towns were founded. The towns were founded because the mines were there, and, uh, I just, you know, I, I, you know, people keep saying that, that the mine's going to, uh, uh, help us prosper, and all this money's gonna make the town a wonderful place. That money doesn't stay in town. I mean, there's been billions and billions of dollars have gone through Superior, Globe, Miami, Kearney, Ray. Those towns aren't prospering, they're, they're making, there's people up there making a living, but the towns aren't prospering. So I just, you know, I just wanted to put that out there, you know, I mean, I'm, I get, I hear these people keep talking about what a wonderful, uh, project this is, and they're, they're talking, putting billions of gallons in, of sulfuric acid into our groundwater, and on the same token, I don't know if people realize, mines are not restricted on water usage, so if they dilute it down to what they say is like lemonade, if they're putting billions of gallons into the water to dilute it down to pump it into the ground, they're gonna be using trillions of gallons of water. And that water, once it's used, it goes into evaporation ponds, and it just goes into the atmosphere, it's, you lose it if it can't be reused. So, uh, it's not just the pollution alone, it's the amount of water that will be used. And our aquifers in Arizona, people need to check up on it, but we're, we're liable to lose our Colorado water here shortly, I mean, within the next year or two, they're gonna make decisions, if, if the Colorado doesn't build up, Arizona's the first one to get cut off, so, anyway, but that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hawkins. Vice Mayor Woolridge.
Um, I would just like to add that I am very proud of our staff and our programs that we provide to the community, our library and our Parks and Rec, and we do a great job, and of course, our other employees that make sure that we take care of the town. And it's really great to see this many people at the meeting, even though we all don't think alike, which is fine, we all have a right to our opinions, and that's okay, because that's what we're here for. But it's so important that we have correct information, and that's so important that we have the correct information, so please come to our meetings anytime, and if we wanna come up with some economic development, let's come up with a mindless thing like those spinners that they think are harmless, but when they're old and they have arthritis in their fingers, they're gonna hate that they were spinning those things. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, we had an amazing start to our meeting this evening. I want to extend another thank you to Parks and Rec. Not only have we been named the most playful city for three years in a row, also the way that we're taking care of our fields and extending into the Little League organization, they thanked all of council, Parks and Rec, just for that partnership and growing and developing, um, the sportsmanship in our youth. Speaking of our youth, Chief Hughes, I want to say thank you, because at the graduation, police officers were present, they were helping with the flow of traffic, as well as the volunteers, everything went really smooth, there, there was not a hitch that happened that evening. So congratulations again to everybody who had a child or a relative graduate, I'm very proud of what they're going to go out and accomplish, and I sincerely hope that they come back to the Town of Florence and contribute to, to making Florence the great place that we are. With that, we are going to be adjourning into an executive session. We will come out and adjourn after the executive session, so at this time, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.